Called the meeting, 21st City Council meeting order. Want to read the decorum statement and states. Welcome to the public meeting of the City Council of the City of Apopka. Please turn off all cell phones or set them to silent. The City Council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may come before the council for action. If you wish to address the council this afternoon or evening now, please make sure you have filled out a card with your contact information and presented it to the clerk. When called upon, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone, stating your name, address of record, organization if any, and direct your comments to the City Council and not to individual commissioners, staff, or members of the public. The council and the city staff encourages constructive criticism. However, personal attacks are prohibited. Pleads observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audience shall refrain from rude or derogatory remarks, shouting disruptions, reflections as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violations of these provisions may result in the issuance of a verbal warning, including warnings for trespass. If violations persist, after such warnings, violators may be removed from the council chambers. All right, public comment. Susan?
Dr. O. I am Supervisor Dr. O from the Orange Soils Water Conservation District. I'm seat three and the address is 201 South Roseland Avenue. We represent the safety and purity of your water and soil and the intention is to protect the aquifer and to protect your health and to preserve agriculture in the area as well as the environment. The whole idea is, and it's been going on for a century, protecting the area and the soil and the water. We want to make sure that what goes in the lakes, what goes in the streams, and what ends up in the aquifer is safe to come back up for you to drink. So we want you to remember this when you're working on flooding issues, when you're working on drinking water issues. What goes into and gets moved around on surface water and what ends up in the stormwater drains is clean or it goes through a reclamation process before it ends up going down into the aquifer. We meet on the second Friday of the month and at Roseland Avenue at the county meeting hall and it's at 3:30 PM. And you're welcome to come. It's also broadcast on Orange TV. You're allowed to come, make public comment, contact us. There are five of us and you're allowed to ask questions. You're allowed to bring issues to us that you want looked into. Citizens are allowed to bring issues up. One thing is Border Lake has never been tested for any chemicals. It has been tested for height, elevation, but it's never tested for chemicals. And so Orange DEP has been asked to be tested for chemicals. The state and the county both have verified that no testing has ever been done on that lake. And if, if the mayor has said he's tested it, then he hasn't relinquished it to the state because they have no record of it. So we'd like to see those copies. So I'm formally asking you for those test results. And a public record request is not needed from the commission. So appreciate it and love to have any questions from you at any time. Communicate with me freely. Thank you.
Leroy Bell, Mod Helen. Just a couple of things. Up at Mod Helen in our community, the, we just paved the whole community. And if you remember, I told you that we have grass growing up through the asphalt already. But the point I want to make tonight, the excess, I guess, tar and where they broke up the sidewalk and stuff. They didn't take this stuff away. They either throwed it up in the grass or they throwed it in the drainage. And the drainage is not clogged up, up there. And we are now what, a couple of days out, a couple of weeks out from the rainy season, maybe five or six days for the rainy season. And we are about two weeks out from the hurricane season. So we already ran across the street there at Clear, Clear Lake Estate. We already got a flooding problem there. So I think if we need to get ahead of this or can we get somebody out there to take a look at it? And secondly, the city is the monitor of the dumps down. They were relinquished. The city had, well, the, the chamber, not the chamber, but the Rotary Club had them a part of the Rotary Club at one time. You know the young lady, she's no longer with y'all now. It's someone else. She got a better job down in Miami. I think you know what I'm talking about. But what I'm saying is the contamination that's down there. We need to know what the contamination is because it's a threat to the health of the people in South Apopka, not only South Apopka, to the aquifer, all the way up into the Wekaua Basin. Because you know the flo, uh, the aquifer don't flow south, it flows north. And we need to know what contaminants, contaminants is in the dump wells down there and we would like to know. Thank you.
Christine Gonzalez. Good evening, everyone. I'm Christine Gonzalez.
I'm Kara Rumpleck.
I'm Mike Rumpleck.
We're the owners of the Naughty Lobster Restaurant located at 311 South Forest Avenue. We've owned our business for almost four years and these years have been blessed with many amazing loyal customers, wonderful recognition and awards. We're proud to be a part of this community and feel as though we've contributed to making Apopka a destination, bringing guests from all across the state of Florida, other states, and even internationally. Sadly, tonight we're here yet again to bring attention to challenges that we continue to face and experience surrounding our business. We continue to clean all areas around our restaurant on a daily basis to ensure our guests have a great arrival and departure at our, at our restaurant. We retrieve items such as broken bottles, dirty clothing, shopping carts filled with trash and someone's personal belongings. These are frequently found in front of our restaurant, on our patio, by our front door, and every nook under and on the bridge. We have found fecal matter and urine under the bridge, on the bridge, and on our property. Video footage was provided to Apopka PD of a man defecating and urinating, witnessed by two of our female employees. Most days we find people camping on the sidewalk, under the bridge, oftentimes with sleeping bags, cardboard boxes, et cetera. Records show that we've appealed to non-emergency Apopka police roughly four to five times per month, sometimes every other day. While APD does respond and moves folks along, we're repeatedly told that there's nothing that can be done as the unhoused are free to sit, stand, and sleep wherever they wish as long as it's not on our property and that they're not breaking the law. This area is clear, is in clear view of our patrons entering and exiting our business. On a recent Saturday afternoon, the busiest day of the week for us, we had a gentleman on the corner of our restaurant screaming obscenities and demonstrating disgusting gestures toward our guests as they entered our, our restaurant to dine. We were advised by a customer entering the restaurant about the situation. Unfortunately, they were not deterred by this person. When police officers arrived, we were asked if we knew what freedom of speech was. Clearly not the response we wished to hear. We have a brief video of this and it's just a glimpse of what went on for almost an hour. After calling Chief McKinley, he sent his watch commander to talk to us, Lieutenant Torres. He apologized for the response we were given. He also told us that we could have had him trespassed. We were unaware of this option as we've always been told that they are, if they're not on our property, we have no rights. We've had people sleeping on the benches right in front of our door of our restaurant. We don't know what the outcome was for one particular woman, but she was back the next night and the next. We arrived at our restaurant one early morning to find our flower pots destroyed, tossed all over our patio. We've put locks on our exterior faucets and outlets as people have bathed themselves using our water faucets and using the outlets to charge their power, to, to charge their phones, excuse me. At 5:00 AM one morning, we had a gentleman yank our American flag out of its pole, ignite it, and walk away, leaving it burning. Our restaurant is a 100-year-old wood structure landmark. This, this action could have been catastrophic had there been the slightest wind. On many occasions, our customers dining on our outside patio or getting in and out of their cars have been approached for food that they're, that they're eating or money. One of our owner's elderly mother, elderly mother was approached for money and out of fear, she gave it to them. One of the persons was bothering our guests on the patio actually came into our restaurant one day and started talking to a table of ladies. As soon as we realized that it was not someone that our customers knew, we told them to leave, which he did, but not before shouting expletives. During one of our calls to APD, they arrived with a civilian officer. In conversation with him, he stated that his wife does not come to the restaurant as she is afraid. How many more potential customers feel this way? Across the street, corner of South Forest Avenue and Third Street, we have an apartment complex that is rundown and housing questionable people. We have footage of a man coming from that complex to our restaurant and stealing our employee's bicycle. We have a collection of victims' rights brochures from calls made to the police department. No one ever follows up. We were asked to write a letter to the government, to a government official requesting funds for more police officer patrol via bicycle. From what we've heard, the funds were approved, yet we have not seen one bicycle in our area. As owners, we're concerned about the safety of our customers and our staff, not to mention the success of the restaurant, as this is our livelihood and that of our staff. For almost four years, we've repeatedly asked for assistance. While the Apopka Police Department responds to our calls and we appreciate any support they give us, we're extremely frustrated. We have video footage and photos of many of the mentioned scenarios and they speak volumes about the ongoing issue in Apopka. We would be happy to share these with the city council members and the mayor. We have all sorts of plans to modernize and improve our restaurant and we've got great ideas for the building we own across the street from the restaurant, all which would continue to drive business to Apopka. Given the past four years and what we've experienced, we're extremely hesitant to consider doing anything to the current restaurant, much less the building across the street. Thank you for your time.
Clinton Stanley, 2002, Lockwood Drive. I'm back again about, again, the recreational facility of Lonzo Williams Park. Why is we don't have the recreational complex that they have in the north side of town, which we know as Pond Can? And we don't have those same amount of dollars or even half of those dollars spent in the south side of Lonzo Williams, at Lonzo Williams Park. We, over and over, we said the car, my truck, it sticks in the road when I park there. We don't have no electric outlets. We don't have no water. And a big thing is we don't have access to a bathroom because we have cheerleaders and football players out there or either kids out there and there's no access to the bathrooms there. Like you have access to every bathroom at Pond Can. Every bathroom up there closes at nine o'clock. And there's no reason why the bathrooms here shouldn't be open until at least seven to eight o'clock at night. And so that's the issue that we're facing and we're going to continue to bring this issue up until we start to see a recreational complex that's able to house youth organizations like they house a youth organization in the north side of town. Baseball, football, basketball, track. Basically, what, to sum it all up, we need an upgrade in the recreational complexes that sits in north, in the south side of Apopka. And I'm going to keep coming. I'm going to keep coming. If I have to fill this room up with kids, I ask you a simple question. What about us? What about the kids of South Apopka? That feel like I don't, I'm not good enough to have a recreational complex, but I have to drive way up there every day and I see what they have up here. It's a what about us? So I'm going to keep coming and I'm going to bring my kids and it's going to continue to ask the city council, what about us? What about the kids and what about the elderly's of this community? What about us? We need a nice walking park for the elderly. We need more of what they have in the north side of town. And ain't no more about, oh, it can't be done. We know it can be done and we know the dollars are there. It's about when it's going to get done and who cares about it getting done?
Virginia Street, 2119 Palm Vista Drive, Apopka. I want to congratulate First Hall's on Fifth for the opening of their facility. I see great growth and momentum as we grow our downtown experience. However, I have a witness, I have witnessed on several occasion adult drinking during market on Fifth and I thought we agreed that we weren't going to allow that. The beer, the cocktails, the wine. I've seen it more than, more than five times myself. You know, so although some people might be comfortable with it, I'm not comfortable with it. And I thought we agreed that we weren't going to allow that. It is being sold at some of the, of those establishments. Nobody's bringing it in. You don't see a bottle. You see it in a glass, which means that they're buying it from one of those, one of the places, one of the businesses. And people are just boldly walking and drinking. And if we haven't agreed on it, it shouldn't be happening. You know, so that is my first comment. My second comment is that we made a motion to move the public comments back to the front and I appreciate that. However, three minutes, backing it down to three minutes, I don't think is fair on all fronts. And I would ask, respectfully ask, that one of the commissioners would at least make a motion to move it back to four minutes. I'm respectfully asking that to at least bring it back to where we had it before it got moved back to three minutes. Because just moving it from the end to the beginning, you know, it's like we created the problem on ourselves and then you want to try to fix it, but then you want to take something back. I, I, I just, that one minute just bothered me all since the last meeting that we had. Lastly, this Sunday is the fourth Sunday of the month. We will be at Just Like Mamas feeding the unhoused and the needy at 5:30 and I invite you to at least volunteer or send your support. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Dr. Jim Woolier. I'm elected Orange Soil and Water District Two Supervisor, representing Northwest Orange County. I simply have a question because I'm unfamiliar with it. It's my intention to go to all the municipalities that I, I'm elected to represent and do a presentation because I strongly believe that after 80 years of voting for Soil and Water Conservation District, people that the public needs to understand the history and the purpose of it. I made my first presentation last night and so I'm asking, I'm not going to take up a lot of time. I'm just simply asking, what is the process to get on the agenda to make a presentation? Last night's presentation was 10 minutes. I would have preferred 15, but it went okay. So if someone would please get back to me and consider that, I greatly appreciate it and God bless y'all.
Are we able to get him on the next agenda to do a concise presentation?
Well, we don't normally, presentations are done by staff members unless there's a, a, it's a, like a finance.
I mean, he's an elected official though too.
I did, I did kind of see the presentation you made at the podium. It was very informative. I have to talk to them again to their meeting.
All right.
We do have your email.
Yes, yes.
We do. If you would just send an email asking for the presentation and I'll forward that to the, what you can actually send it to the chief, the interim chief administrator.
Nikki McGuire.
If you can just CC us on that email too, just so we know that it was sent. Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council, Mayor, everyone in a rightful place, Nikki McGuire, Naomi Kids. I'm not going to be using my full three minutes. Just have a quick question and first of all, thank you to every one of you who have supported Naomi Kids over the years and the general public, everyone who has contributed. We appreciate it. I just have one quick question. We do not feel entitled. We're not looking for any special treatment, but with this current fiscal year, we're already, we're approaching nine months or eight months into the fiscal year. Any one of you, do you have any updates on the $100,000 that was budgeted for nonprofit organizations? Check the website. There is no information on when it will be available, how can we apply, how? Just throw us a bone, please. That's it. Thank you.
Valerie Sparkman.
Hello, everyone. I'm Valerie Sparkman. I'm the owner of Just Like Mamas, but this has nothing to do with Just Like Mamas. I'm actually on the committee for Apopka Juneteenth. And Kiami Jones is our president and she talked to Randall. And I have several questions. I don't know if they're supposed to be answered now or just commenting. We're looking, we found out that there's $12,000 provided for Juneteenth. And she was told that unless we partner with the city, that's the only way that we can get these funds. I don't know if that's the whole gist of it, but I'm, my, my thing is I, we wouldn't mind partnering with you guys, but we don't want the city to take over because this is our seventh year and we've been doing it with just donations to transform outreach. Donations and sponsorships, that's what we've been doing it with. But if we can partner with the city and we wanted to know, how soon will these funds be available and distributed? Because Juneteenth is right around the corner. Our event starts, our celebration is June 14th, Saturday, June 14th. Our event starts, um, our celebration is June fourteenth, um, Saturday, June fourteenth. And I don't know, are you answering or am I just commenting?
Yes, we had a discussion and a meeting, uh, with Ms. Kiomi. Uh, the partnership opportunity is typically for larger scale events, uh, historically proven events. Um, so Juneteenth being in the seventh or eighth year now, we could look at that. And typically, these partnerships are to pay for some of the infrastructure costs and some of the services.
Yes, because, um, we were told that, um, it's like three thousand dollars for, um, officers to help with the parade and different, we're getting charged. Last year, they weren't. We didn't get charged for it, but this year we are. And so, um, and I know right here, the farmer's market, they get free, um, free police. And, um, everything here on Fifth Street, um, when we have the, well, when they have the farmer's market every Friday, um, that blocks off the street and all of this is for free. So, um, I'm asking that if we're gonna have to pay now for a parade for, um, national event, um, Juneteenth, um, I think that we should have the police for free. And we should also be able to tap into these funds that the city, that the government gave to the city for this event, Juneteenth. So I am, I am concerned about that.
What are their items other than police? Uh, how else can we partner with you other than police?
Um, the, the cost of the building, um, the insurance.
And that's for the Billy Dean Center?
Yep, the Billy Dean Center.
Cause we discussed it, Ratley, in my, that was one of the things I did bring up, because that was one thing that was important, making sure that we have that money.
And entertainment for this, the, um, entertainment, because we can bring in artists, because that brings more, you know, um, recognition to the, the holiday, because it is a national holiday now. So that, I mean, if we bring in like, we can bring in different artists with, if we had more money to work with. We've really been working with what, what we've been given.
And I know one of the things that was discussed in the gender review meeting was that they, it was really clear that we did not want to, the city did not want to come in and take over something that you guys were doing. But the partnership would kind of help utilize those funds.
Yes, and I, I mean, we're, we're ready to go because like right now is, is May twenty-first and June fourteenth is around the corner. And we want to, you know, and we just found out about this twelve thousand dollars that was, um, you know, allocated for Juneteenth. So we just found out about this.
What did we provide last year?
What did you guys provide?
Yes, or how, I guess, how did we partner? Did we do, did we do anything last year?
Uh-uh, you guys each one, um, donated, I mean, sponsored, um, you know.
A portion of that.
A portion, I guess, out of your own pockets.
Okay. But it wasn't the city.
Yeah, I think you were the highest, you and Mr. Alexander.
Okay.
So, so Ratley, I know we talked about it. What are some of the things that you came up with?
So typically, these things, uh, if you want to look at the Martin Luther King Junior Day Parade that the city also, uh, has a special event license agreement with, uh, the city provides in that agreement or in that scenario, uh, police for the parade, uh, some infrastructure as in barricades, stage, generator, some of the event infrastructure. The thought would be that the provide, the partner would provide the entertainment, the event planning, those type of operations.
Yeah. Do we have a separate event planned?
No.
No, we don't.
No. So this is, this is the event?
We, we didn't, uh, we didn't.
We created.
They started this plan back, and it's been going on for many years now. They started this plan back in February. Um, so we didn't want to, we did not want to get, uh, you know, step on any toes.
This is the event then, and we've allocated the funds.
Well, I think, I don't think it's a matter of the city not wanting to. I think they want to. They're looking at a creative way, because we spoke about is that we want to make sure that we're not, we want to make, be part of what you guys are doing. We don't want to do our own thing. We definitely want to be part of it because, you know. So I think it's more so just figuring out logistics, what you guys need and the city supports it.
Okay.
It's similar, again, very similar to what has been done for the Martin Luther King Day Junior Parade.
Yep, and we, um, we sent the list in with everything that we needed. Um, last year, we had a stage that cost two thousand dollars, and we paid it with our own sponsorship, you know, funds that was donated to us. And this year, we could, we, we counseled that, we counseled the stage until, um, we found out about the twelve thousand dollars, and then she talked to Randall and we gave a whole nother list. And so now we booked the stage again, so.
So Ratley's working with you all now to, Ratley, you working with him now?
I don't know.
We, we met with Ms. Kiomi, uh, yesterday, I believe it was. And so we did ask her to provide us some additional information, uh, on the event, uh, to try and get that next step. We would have to come back to council, obviously, to finalize some things at this June fourth.
Like, when is that? Like, because if we come back to the next meeting, then it'll be after June fourteenth.
Next meeting, our next meeting is June fourth. But what, you've already, you've already sent the list or sent a list?
She sent the list. I mean, I already, I saw the email.
Yeah, it's probably in our events division right now, so I can pull that and give it to you in the morning.
Yeah, okay, because I, I, I was on the phone with her when I walked in the door, so.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, because I mean, that's, we've allocated the funds, and if this is the, the event.
Yes.
I think Ratley's definitely working with her. I don't think it's a matter of just working out logistics.
Well, it seems like they're not. I guess that's.
Well, no, that's not true.
Yeah, and that's why I called her, because she said she wants to know when, like, you know.
It's not that he's not working with her. He, she just sent this yesterday. So he's not like he's not working, I don't think he's not working with her.
Yeah, so I'll get that information that was sent in, uh, from Ms. Kiomi, and we'll send it to you in the morning.
Okay, so I'm saying like, so you're saying June fourth is when you guys will meet again to finalize?
We'd have to bring it back as an agreement for final approval with council. But it, it sounds like directional councils to continue in that process to finalize that.
Yes, to get the money.
So, but if we already allocated twelve thousand dollars, as long as you spend within the twelve thousand dollars, you still need to bring it back?
That's what I'm.
No, this would be for the actual agreement to then go ahead and spend the money on that event.
I mean, can, can we agree, do we have to bring it back? Um, what's the procedureally? What, what, can, can we go ahead and allocate without coming back to us or how?
It would be the same special event license agreement that we've done with the Martin Luther King Day Parade, uh, marking off this street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that.
It's that same agreement. It'd just be structured for this event.
But then, do.
The twelve thousand.
Do they have to then wait for that agreement to be approved for them to get the funding?
So the city would pay for those items that we talked about, those infrastructure items.
But we'd have to, that agreement has to be approved first.
Ideally, yes, that agreement should be in place.
So there could be an opportunity tonight to where we say, matching the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Parade agreements and all the other agreements that we have, let's potentially approve it. If there's any tangible changes, then it comes back, but at this point, let's approve it, get that funding going, because then they have ten, ten days.
I believe that's up to your, your pleasure. The special event permit application, they did file all that, um, that's been actually in the packet for the road closure.
Yeah, it's one of the most complete applications we've had, I will say that.
Cause we've been, we've been under pressure for a long, every year is something, so.
It's, it's, it's a tight application, so thank you for that.
So, can we do that, attorney?
So we have the application.
So he said we can do it.
The special event permit application has been submitted because they were going through the permit process as a standalone. Um, so we do have that. It's in the packet for the road closure. So if you would like, it sounds like we can, you can go ahead and, uh, instruct me to finish the process with the special event license agreement that we've used in the past for the Martin Luther King Day Parade and, uh, marking on Fifth, and we can go ahead and get that going.
I'd say we should, absolutely.
Yes, absolutely. And who, who, did we, last year, what was the process for funding? How did that go last year?
Uh, up to this point, it's been a standalone event. They've done.
They didn't have any funding. We, we remember that was one of the line items that I, that I actually wanted to make sure that we separate, so they can have the twelve thousand dollars, because before it wasn't in the budget for it.
Okay, yeah, so let's, let's make sure that's taken care of and there's no delays.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Upper Piggly Three Six Oh Three Golden Gem Road. Just an observation. I come here and I often try to have dialogue with commissioners. But very rarely do you engage in dialogue like you did with the last public speaker there. You know, if you're gonna treat us equally, we should all be treated equally. I expect to get answers to questions when I ask questions and never get them. It goes from one week to another week. So I'm gonna piggy, piggyback off of something our attorney mentioned tonight. I believe he spoke about an affidavit of completion and how the city would have to have one before it could pay for any work that was done by contractors. I see double standards here because on numerous occasions, I've asked the city clerk for a affidavit of completion or a certificate of competent completion, uh, for the pond at Golden Gem Road. The records request that I've had back have said that that documents do not exist, and they were unable to supply me with them. So can you explain to me why, and this is from memory, because I don't have documentation here tonight, but in September of twenty twenty-one, the city paid two point one million, I think it was two thousand, two million one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to contractor for a pond liner on Golden Gem Road. That was on Pond One, and I also requested information from, through public records requests for the cost of the liner on Pond Two. We never got that. So my recollection is that we spent about four million dollars in pond liners. So if we didn't have a certificate for the completion, why did we pay the money to the contractors? If we don't have a certificate of completion, was it legal to fill that pond with water? If it wasn't legal to fill that pond with water, we have a problem, because we're in deep doo-doo with FDEP. And I looked at the contractual obligations on the contracts that I received through public records, and it says that we required to have that in place before we filled the ponds. So we're still back speaking about Golden Gem Road ponds. I'm still willing to, to meet with, with the mayor, willing to meet with commissioners. I have solutions. I have a great new idea for Golden Gem Road that would align with some of what the mayor wants to do. I think we have an opportunity with Golden Gem Road. We don't just have a problem. But that's something that if you as commissioners don't respond to my emails, we're never gonna get anywhere. I have solutions. I'm prepared to bring them to you, but if you don't listen, then I can't help you.
Sylvester Hall, thirty-nine-one Rolling Hills Lane. In a, in a Apopka, in the state of Florida, in the great US of A, our country's in a crisis. Because too many good people standing by, watching bad things happen and doing absolutely nothing about it, remaining silent. It is time to stand up and say no more to corruption, no more to hate, no more to racism. Those things are killing our country. When we normalize the abnormal, we desensitize the truth to the point the truth doesn't matter. That's a problem in our country. To all residents, when we start electing our appointed officials, our elected officials, when we start electing people that knows principles matter, that knows integrity matters, that knows honesty matters, that knows accountability matters, that knows responsibility matters, that knows that morals matter, that knows that ethics matter, that knows that character matters, that knows that procedures matters, that knows that leadership matters, and knows that laws matter. When we start electing our candidates on that, you will see a different America. You will see a different city of Apopka. You'll see a different state of Florida. Now, we took the public comments down to three minutes. Next year, we have the election. Now you telling the public, I don't want to hear from you. But I wonder what you're gonna tell them next year when you read, when you run for election. I wonder how you're gonna look at them and you're gonna tell them, I want to hear your opinion when I want to hear. This is gonna be very interesting. And my heart goes out to the business owner that's sitting here talking about homeless. And we got a mayor that has all power, and he does absolutely nothing about homeless, period. So in life, there's a cause and then there's effect for just about everything. And most of the time, we worry and we focus on the effects of it. What you see happening in this administration, lack of staffing, unethical, unethical things, corruption. Those are effects. The cause of it is just bad leadership. You get rid of that, everything changes. There's always that. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Let's see. Commissioner Smith, you give us the prayer pledge and fact of the day, please, sir.
Our Father, God, we come once again grateful for this opportunity to serve this city. We ask for Him, Father, to keep us humble, that all that we shall say and do be pleased and accepted in Your sight. Bless those that are in this chamber, they shall feel Your spirit, that we be able to come to one agreement for the best interest of this city. This we pray in Thy Son Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On May twenty-first, eighteen eighty-one, in Washington DC, humanitarianist Clara Barton and Adolphus Solomons founded the American National Red Cross, an organization established to provide humanitarian aid to victims of wars and natural disaster. Barton had worked with the sick and wounded during the American Civil War and became known as the angel of the battlefield for her tireless dedication. She was in Europe in eighteen seventy when Franco-Portnoy war broke out, and she went behind the general lines to work for the International Red Cross. In eighteen seventy-three, she returned to the United States, and four years later, she organized an American branch of the International Red Cross. The American Red Cross received its first US federal charter in nineteen hundred. Barton had the organization to her eightieth and died in nineteen twelve. Solomon served alongside her as vice president for twelve years. Fact of the day.
All right, we've got two sets of minutes. Any changes? Not look for any, anybody from the public which should speak? All right, uh, look for a motion to approve minutes. So we got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries and has a say. Ratley, anything on the agenda we need to?
Yes, I do have one item. Let me pull that information up for you real quick. We need to, uh, pull public hearing item number one, ordinance number thirty-one oh one, the rewrite of the comprehensive plan to allow additional time for staff to review the rewrite per the requirements of the Senate Bill one eighty. So when we get to that, we'll need to pull that, and I think the recommendation was July second's meeting.
Right, so anybody that was here just for that, you know, if you want to check out, that's fine. If you want to stay, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll press forward. Okay, all right, presentation, Blanche, this is South Apopka Annexation.
Blanche Sherman, Finance Director. Um, at the previous council meeting, um, the council requested that we contact several other agencies or governmental entities that have perhaps, um, perform an annexation study. Um, and we did. We contacted ten, um, cities and municipalities and counties. And basically, three of those have, um, performed one, and the cost ranges from the sixty-three thousand to the hundred and fifty-five, the three in the green that you see on this list. The ones in the yellow, we have not gotten all the information, um, yet, and the ones in the gray, we researched completed, they didn't provide any further information. So the objective of the survey was to determine the estimated cost to see if it would exceed the fifty thousand. And based on what we're seeing here in the years that these studies were performed, not saying that they are necessarily the same scope, you know, that we are going to do, but it's likely that it will exceed the fifty thousand, and it could go as, as much as a hundred thousand. So we would have to go through a formal solicitation process. We did talk in our briefings. I was looking into whether we could use some of the other contracts or piggyback on one of the state contracts that one of these, um, municipalities used, and that was determined that we cannot use those transport. And that was determined that we cannot use those transportation, um, planning contracts and that state contract was not eligible as well. So we would have to go out through a formal solicitation, we'll work with Cliff, of course, to get the scope of work that is needed. And I would also need to secure the funding for this and that would be through coming back with a budget amendment, you know, probably after we award it or something. At the award.
Any questions for Blanche? I, Bobby, do you remember how many residential properties that were in or Blanche, maybe, do you remember how many residential properties were in the the annexation area?
It was like six hundred and fifty.
That was a question I asked in the gender review meeting. I think he was researching.
I think it was like six hundred and fifty.
I've got maybe a, it's not a guaranteed solution, but it's something to, what if we got sent a registered receipt mail to everybody in that, in that area to get their in, in the Orange County side and got their, you know, yes or no. And based on that result, then we could, I mean, because we could put that out pretty quickly, couldn't we? I mean, Bobby, that wouldn't be a hard thing to do.
So, so that was, that was suggested back in.
The Orange Counties, the Orange County side?
That was suggested back in twenty under, when, um, the city attorney Rodriguez, that was suggested to send surveys to residents and homeowners of the South Apopka regarding annexation. That was done, that was the suggestion and we never really followed through on that.
I think that's a good, great idea to see if they're. So we'll be sending, like, doing a survey or what's?
Well, I can say yes or no, you know, I mean, now the question is, you know, how much information would you give them? If, you know, do we put informate? Do we put the information in the envelope that we send to them? Or do we only give the information be on our website? I mean, it's not a, definitely not a foolproof way of getting us, um, you know.
You need a response.
An accurate number, but it would be.
But that wasn't the goal of the feasibility study though, that that was to take a comprehensive approach to what that looks like, cost analysis, resident count, homeownership count, all of those things, we'd have a comprehensive look at the unincorporated area. So just a, just a feedback survey is not going to get what we need.
Well, I think just to check the pulse to see if the feasibility studies even need it before we spend a hundred thousand dollars. But to make sure, what I recommend is because a lot of people don't check their mail or sometimes things get lost in the mail, they don't respond, we actually hire someone to go door to door and collect signatures. So that way we're explained to them, okay, this is what we're doing and then check off homeowners. So that's what I recommend, it'll be, you know, a way to save money, but also make sure that we're effective and people.
Hire someone to go out and go door to door and do a survey.
And yeah, do a survey door to door.
Yeah, because I noticed one of them said that they did in-house, um, study with their staff. I just wondered if that's something we can do and save a hundred thousand dollars.
I think the complexity of this, this study.
It is governed by statute, so it's not a, oh, let's just see what all this means. It's required. And once we do it, then we have to provide a minimum of fifteen days notice to the county of the results of the study. Now, in theory, it is so we can then, as the municipality decide to act on the feasibility, also informing the residents of the area to, uh, to be considered for annexation and have them have the opportunity to look at it and so forth. Um, so it is not, you know, some extra thing, it's required as like exhibit A. But if you're asking, can we get an informal poll, if you want to call it that, a survey or whatever, to gauge interest? Um, you know, like any poll, it depends on how you word the question, would it be, are you interested in being annexed? Or do you support annexation or, you know, whatever? Uh, in, or if, if you were having to pay city taxes, would you support annexation? I mean, how you word the question is going to affect how you, the response you get.
Well, I think what you do is you'd have somebody that would write a, a support their one pager or two pager and you'd have somebody write an opposition, one or two page. And you put that together with, or with, after you've read this, are you now in favor of, of annexation or opposed to it?
To the extent we know some of the facts, like what water rates would be or whatever that would, it would apply to those people. Yeah, I, I think that's probably okay because at the end of the day, it's non-binding, but it might give you an idea of whether you want to invest in the other stuff.
Because then you got all the, I mean, that just, that's just the first step, like you say, many to get us there and, and, but I.
Or the question could just simply be, would you be in favor of having the annexation put on the ballot?
Uh, it's how, again, it's your question, so you word it however you want. But that's why I'm saying the how you word the question is going to influence the response. If you just say, are you just inhabiting on the ballot, they, they say, well, what's the harm in having on the ballot? Because I'm voting against it. So it's all depends on what it is. People who do polls for a living know that how the question's worded matters and what the responses are going to be. If you really want to know, do they support annexation? You could just ask them simply, but without any facts, do you support being annexed into the city of Apopka if that option is provided to you? If I got that, knowing what I know, which is absolutely nothing, I'd have to say I don't know because I had no facts about what's it, is it going, what's it going to be compared to what I get now? Does I have better services, lower rate? I, I don't know. Um, but to your point, Mayor, if you could come up with a fact sheet, it's actual facts, i- if you say this would be your water rate, you would be served by the Apopka Fire Department, Apopka P D, Apopka Util, or whatever we know, the things we can actually say that are knowable that are factual. There's nothing wrong with giving anybody facts, but we can't push an agenda one way or the other per statute for any candidate or issue.
So going door to door with almost, it would be perceived or we're trying to push an issue if we go door to door, will that?
It, if individually, you can do whatever you want, as a city official.
A city official, not individually.
Yeah, yeah, like if you've decided to go knock on doors informally, you can find out and provide whatever information you want. But if it comes out under the city, here's our survey from the city of Apopka, it has to be apolitical and factual only.
So I just want to kind of give you some numbers because I have all the workshops, I carry them all the time. Um, the workshop that we had January twenty fourth of twenty twenty three, it had here, according to the Orange County Planning Division within the area to be annexed, there are two thousand one hundred and eighty five built residential units and three hundred and eighty seven resident, vacant residential lots. Um, based on the numbers, the proposed annexation would incorporate approximately five thousand nine hundred and forty three new residents into the city of Apopka. Now, this was done, these numbers came from Orange County, January twenty fourth, twenty three.
Is that, is that the, the, because we did kind of two different, um, areas. One was Keene Road, which I thought was a lot less than that, but I, I, is that, does it show where the?
Well, the first one was done November twenty ninth, twenty twenty two.
Yeah, see, I think that was the one that was.
And.
Keene Road here.
I'll tell you in a second because I, I keep them. So this one had the proposed annexation, annexation boundary is two thousand four hundred and eight acres. And at that time it had two thousand three hundred and forty parcels with a total of one thousand one hundred and eighty two acres. That was on twenty, and then it had one thousand thirty six homes were homesteaded. And he said, um, undeveloped properties cannot be annexed.
But that's, the, the amount of homes isn't the key, it's the voters, right? This only goes to voters. So it's not homeowners and it's not landowners, it's voters. So it can be tenants that can control what a homeowner, uh, what happens to a homeowner's property or, uh, their, their multifamily property, whichever property it is, so. So it's not just, this, this is very specific just to voters within the designated area.
Okay. So what's the pledge of the council next step?
And we were here, March twenty eighth was our last town hall about this, twenty twenty three.
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with sending out a, uh, a notice, just asking them, uh, to get a pulse. Um, but if, if we have to do the, the study.
They do the physical.
Then I think we need to go ahead and do the R F P, uh, and do the scope and, and get that get that going and get it moving forward so we can have the study done.
A true cost, yeah, associated with it.
That's the pledge of the council, okay.
And let's, um, so then we'll, I don't know, I don't know who would be the one to, uh, Radley, maybe see what, if there are any organizations out there, I'm sure there are ones that will do door to door just so we got maybe a number for in two weeks, a door to door.
A door to door knockers.
Yeah.
Survey, okay.
Yeah. Okay, is that, everybody good on that?
So you're still going to do a door, the door knock?
No, we're going to have your number, we'll at least have how much it would cost to do that.
Oh.
As we can do it simultaneously to the point where if, if, if the, if the door, door knocking comes back and it's seventy percent against and might as well guess we, we pull the plug now, that would.
We, we'll see.
Okay.
Okay.
So just clarified, proceed with preparing the scope for an R F P and gather information on the door to door survey. Now, what's the timeline and goal of getting this on the ballot?
Timeline and goal to put it on the ballot.
It was March, right?
Yeah, a hundred fifteen, a hundred five, but again, what's the ba, what?
I think it was March.
Yeah.
It was March.
Yes.
It was March.
Okay. I didn't have a Mac on Paulers.
Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you, Blanche. All right, um, consent agenda, we've got eleven consent agenda items. Anybody need to have any of those pulled either from the dais or from the public?
I like to pull number four.
Number four. No, that's just presentation.
I would like to hear from the public, that, we're just talking about doing a survey to hear from the public and we're not going to hear from the public. I, I think it'd be very valuable to hear from the public.
We've got, one we're going to pull.
So you just don't want to hear from the public at all? You don't want to hear from the public at all?
Pull number four.
We have residents here that want to.
I need a motion to approve items one through eleven.
I just can't believe you don't want to hear from the residents, but you'd rather spend money to hear from them so you don't actually have to see them in person.
Okay.
I just, I, this is.
I thought on the last, on the last rules and guidelines, after every agenda, we had the opportunity to speak.
Presentations, no presentations are different than, than business items, always have been. It's no vote, it's a presentation.
But didn't we just?
It ain't a vote, we're not asking, it's just about input.
Again, it's valuable to have, and this is a few, it's valuable to have public feedback.
We're on to consent.
So how much money are you going to spend to not talk to residents then? Tens of thousands of dollars to not hear from residents. All right, that's all you continue to do.
To, to approve.
Well, I, I wanted to give a little history on annexation. I would like to give history on annexation.
Minus the four.
And Commissioner Smith, you said you was a hundred percent for it by any means necessary. Do you still stand there? That's all right, I just want it on record, that's all. So move.
Now bring up number four. That would be, I don't know, I guess that's by Cliff, that's the mineral rights. Yeah, your mic again.
That is the mineral rights for Torres, uh, and for what it's worth, I can provide a brief presentation. We got a request, uh, I don't know who it came through, but it was ultimately rooted to me to review the document. It was a request because Torres is looking to sell one or more of the parcels that it controls, that's what the request said. And that the buyer, uh, is asked for as a condition to purchase the property, a release of the claim that we have per the deed that we gave them, the special warranty deed, um, of the mineral rights. The mineral rights were reserved in the first instance because it was a requirement of state statute. But we have the opportunity, if we choose to, to, um, release those rights, which is what they've asked for. As far as I can understand, we do not have an obligation to do so. And which I clearly wanted to make sure I just point out is, I have no idea whether these rights have any particular value. I don't know if there's gold in them there hills or oil in the soil or anything. But the document does what it seeks to do, which is to release those rights. Everything else is discretionary.
When you rewrote, I think you rewrote the original, when you came, uh, when you became mayor in twenty eighteen, did you renegotiate that contract with?
Not that part of it.
Not that part, it was always?
That was under Kilshammer and Kyle Beck, so no, I did not.
Okay.
So, but you had the opportunity to renegotiate it, right?
I guess I did.
Yeah, you did, okay, so you can blame others, but you had the opportunity to fix it.
Yeah, so, what was that, it, was it a contract or was it a deed? Is it a deed, is it a deed restriction?
Yeah, it's, it's a, in the warranty deed, what's called the special warranty deed that the city gave to Torres when it purchased or received the property, part of the restrictions in the deed, like a deed restriction, but in the deed itself, as opposed to a separate document, was the, was that we were retaining these mineral rights. And so they've asked, as they sent a copy of the special warranty deed along with their request, saying that they have purchaser, I don't recall them identifying who the purchaser is, but the purchaser has requested that the city release its claim for these mineral rights. But, and they sent a document to review that does that, which I reviewed and made a few changes to, that's the document.
But what I just want to be clear is that there is no one on the council that can go and it was, it was a deed already that was, it was deeded over. So we can't go back and renegotiate a deed.
No, no, this is, this is a release, like, of any other claim we would have. If we had easements and they said, hey, will you release your easements? We could say yes, we could say no.
And they, what's interesting is they sold all the other properties without that release.
Right, exactly. Whoever it is that is their buyer, apparently.
I think it's from understanding, it's the lender, it's the lender that is requiring that that portion, it's cleared off.
I know somebody is.
Cloud on the deed, so.
I mean, back, I guess, in the day, that mineral rights were, were a part of normal contracts, so, and then they just need to have that release, so I, I don't.
And, and my recommendation is that we keep them.
What's the value to us to keep them?
What's the value, give it to them?
Well, it might not.
They, so I think what happened, so just, because I did speak with, because I had questions about it, so I did speak with, um, Torres Development. And from my understanding, the person that is trying to secure a loan cannot, through S B A, S B A, all lenders have different guidelines and that S B A is requiring that that particular part in the deed be released because it could cloud, uh, the ability for the borrower, the borrower or the seller to resell the property later. So that's the reason why. And years and years ago, uh, that was customary. Um, right now, people just aren't doing it anymore, I just think the government was doing it back then, but I don't, I mean, I don't think there's a pot of gold underneath it or anything like that, I just.
It was requ, it, there's a state statute that required the city to retain these rights when it sold the property. And that's what the deed does. They've now requested that we release those rights and there's nothing that I can find that would, would keep us legally from doing so. That said, there's also nothing that would compel us to do so. You asked the question, uh, Mr. Smith, why would we do this? I can speculate and that's all it would be. One quick, it's Commissioner Smith, sorry. I'm sorry, what did I say? It's Commissioner Smith. What did I say? Mister, I'm sorry, I apologize, Commissioner Smith. Um, uh, okay, back to where I was. So the, the reason that I can think of that that would be perhaps something you'd be interested in is if whoever is getting the property would then say, now that I got it, I'm going to actually build the thing or whatever it is that was supposed to be built that hasn't been built there. But other than that, I can't say that I can think of a reason.
It's something already built there, it's the pre-existing, the building is already there, it's been there for over a hundred years, so.
And to confirm too, so if a new agreement, the, the deed restrictions that were put in place were based off of an agreement, if that agreement had changed to where those deed restrictions didn't exist anymore, then this wouldn't come back in front of us, right? It would already be, if they wanted to sell it, we would know, they, it could have been unilateral from our city administrator or the mayor to say, uh, we're good, we don't need to change, the agreement's already changed, so we can sign off.
So we can sign off on releasing those rights.
I I if I understand the question, I don't think the answer is yes. Again, when the property was sold under whatever administration, I guess it was Kilshammer, I just don't remember. Um there was a requirement by statute and it cited.
I understand it has you have to include retain the mineral rights. So with a new agreement, effectively what we're doing now.
Yeah, it's you have an option. They they've asked you to do it. You could say yes, you could say no.
Sure. So it could have been done previously, could have been done now.
Yeah, well, no one ever asked it, but yes, I guess you could.
But the state statute is still in place.
Yes.
Wait, so the state does require that still?
So it still require it now? The state statute?
It did require it when you deeded the property. It doesn't heck say forever.
Have other cities release?
I this is the first time I've ever encountered it. I've never seen it.
What's the state statute, please? Uh let me let me pull that up and tell you real quick.
Special warranty deed view file. It's two.
It said two seventy.
And they were able to sell off other parcels without us releasing the deed.
It it's only because of the 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 particular person that's purchasing the property. Lenders and SBA is requiring to they don't like that deed restriction.
Exceptions.
Yep.
Subject to automatic phosphate metals, minerals and petroleum reservations by virtue of section two seventy point one one sub one Florida statutes. That says exhibit B to the to the deed, the special warranty deed.
I just wanna make sure they were just not affecting a homeowner. Someone's right to sell their property when we really don't have a benefit at all to the, I mean, if we don't, we we don't know what it's worth. So to say that we're not gonna do it, we don't know what it's worth and it's preventing someone from selling their property is.
And and not only that, I mean, if we're trying to.
Grow the developed.
Town center and we're buggering it up by not doing this, then. I I understand your 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 point. Why give away something if you don't have to? But if if they've got, obviously have a user for the property. Is it if the if if the uh the lender wants them to give it away or for us to give it away, then there's a use for it. I don't know what it is, but there's they've got a use that hopefully will will benefit the town center. That's. But I that's my thought, but.
Do we know the value of the mineral rights? Is there a value? Attorney?
I'm sorry.
Is there a value? Are you aware of any value of the mineral?
Uh it you to know the value, you'd have to know whether there's something there such as coal, oil, natural gas. Uh or maybe a water supply underwater spring or something. I I underground spring. I I don't know.
I know.
That's the whole point. The reason I made when I when I answered the question about reviewing the document, I said, look, I don't know whether there's any value. If you're and you wanna know whether this accomplishes the goal, it does. It gives up the rights there. I have no idea whether there's any value and the only way you'd know is to have someone do some exploration to find out. Which we can't do because we don't own the property.
So so I'm I'm looking at the special warranty deed that was signed. The twenty second of June to twenty eighteen.
So twenty eighteen it was signed.
But you signed. So it wasn't Joe Kilshammer?
It it was it was already the the.
It was already there?
Right.
But then you signed.
I signed when we sold it. Yes, when they sold it. Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But it wasn't, it was state stat- it was statutorily required.
I'm not.
No, you said former Mayor Joe Kilshammer and Kyle Becker is who did it. The state statute did it.
Yeah.
Is a true mischaracterization of the reality of what happened.
Okay.
Who's that?
Well, looking for some direction.
Well, I just I just don't think there's there's no value to it. I I think that to have the any type of restrictions where a property owner cannot sell their property and we can't articulate or we can't give value to why would the city would retain those rights. I just don't think it's fair to the home to the property owner for us to restrict them.
Uh Attorney Shepherd on so two seventy eleven subsection, I guess, two B.
Correct.
Yeah.
The local government, a water management district, or an agency of the state may, at its discretion, sell or release preserved interest in any parcel of land except that such sale or release shall be made upon the petition of the owner, which is what we got. Uh of the uh of the parcel of land with a statement of the reasons justifying the sale or release. I got the release.
So what a what a unique statute. It's required and then you can let it go.
You can let it go cuz according to the statute, we can let it go.
Make your stuff up. That's why I'm not smart enough to go to Tallahassee.
So if the statute is allowing us to release the release it, what's the reason why we wouldn't release it? If we there's no value to us that we can articulate. That's for the council.
Okay, so there is a provision that allows us to do this. That's a it's a in bizarre statute. Okay, got it.
Tallahassee awaits you.
Alright. Anyway, so looking for a motion to release right right the release of rights document for Torres Apopka City Center Inc. Some got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez, second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor? Commissioner Smith. So four to one with Commissioner Smith in opposition. Alright, next up, business item number one, special event request. Miss Cindy Edwards, come on down. Gosh, you've got her hair curled and everything. Wow.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I'm Cindy Edwards, interim Parks and Recreation Director. I'm here tonight to request authorization for street closures for Transform Outreach for the Apopka Juneteenth Day Parade. There we go. The street closures are requested in the special event permit applications for Transform Outreach Juneteenth Parade. The parade, as you can see from the map there, will begin at New Hope Missionary Baptist Church located at nine two seven South Central Avenue. Staging will take place on the tenth street side between New Hope and Saint Paul. The parade route will proceed down tenth street, then turn right onto Marvin Z. Zander's Avenue. It will continue along Marvin Z. Zander's Avenue, crossing over Michael Gladon Boulevard and then left onto Sixth Street. From there, it will continue to tenth street and conclude at Alonzo Williams Park. The DRC recommended approval of the special event permit application along with the provided street closures at their May fourteenth twenty twenty-five meeting. The staff recommends the city council to approve the requested street closure as part of the special event permit application.
Any questions for Cindy? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve the special event request for the road closure for June the Juneteenth Parade. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Talking about Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor? All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Radley.
Good evening again. Uh Rad the Williams, interim city administrator. Uh tonight, I'm here with a uh funding agreement uh for the Main Street Apopka Inc. program. Uh during the FY twenty-five budget development process, a proposal for Main Street Apopka Inc. was presented to the city council for consideration of a funding agreement between the City of Apopka and Main Street Apopka Inc. Uh funding in the amount of fifty thousand dollars was approved by city council and FY twenty-five budget to be set aside for Main Street Apopka pending the creation of a funding agreement. City staff and the city attorney's office have worked with Main Street Apopka Inc. on a proposed funding agreement attached to the staff report. Main Street Apopka Inc. is agreeable with the terms outlined and is ready to move forward with scope the outline in agreement. Uh just some highlights from the agreement. Uh term would be from July first of this year to June thirtieth of next year. The fifty thousand dollar funding paid in quarterly payments, a matching fund requirement of fifty percent uh in either cash or in kind uh contributions to Main Street Apopka. Uh twenty-five percent of the funding may be used for staffing salaries, wages, and benefits. And then we did ask for some reporting um from Main Street Apopka in the form of by annual report to the Apopka CRA to include work plan update, upcoming MSA events, education highlights, packet and digital traffic statistics, property inventory database review, and a financial review. Uh I know Mrs. Caitlin Keshad is here from Main Street Apopka and uh we're available for any questions.
Any questions for Radley?
Uh I do. I had one question for you. I'm excited to see this come. I know that the everybody's excited about it. Did you speak with attorney about my concerns about the the contract at all?
Um no, so I think it'd be good time for you to.
So in the contract, we ask for insurance to be provided after we after payment is made. So is there a reason why we're requiring forty-five days? They have to show they have insurance forty-five days after the execution is contract.
Where where is that?
Well, it's item it's item nine in the contract. And the funding, so the discrepancy is uh we're requiring insurance uh forty-five days.
After.
Up to forty-five days and the payment can start thirty days after signing.
So we can issue payment prior to insurance.
We shouldn't.
Well, according to this contract, we can.
Okay, uh I I didn't, the way I understood the contract and it was not only sent to me, but some somewhat explained to me. And it was my understanding that we had we appropriated money, which had not yet been allocated to a specific agreement back at the beginning of this budget season. Um and that this is the first attempt at an agreement that allows the money to go from being or allocated in the budget to assign to a specific contract. And that the work that is under this agreement would not happen for a bit. But if that's correct, then certainly you would wanna have proof of insurance before you start making payments.
So I know Miss Keshad is here. I I believe to to square that up, we could adjust it to have a thirty day on both.
Well, I think we know. I think it's important that we have insurance before we issue payment.
Right. Well, we can also include that language. I don't think she's disagreeable to that. We get that language and then make sure they match thirty thirty.
Thirty thirty.
No, 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 not match thirty thirty because we need to make sure that we have insurance prior to.
Right, but still give a window. Or do you wanna get rid of the window completely?
Well, I think insurance needs to, we need to make sure we have insurance before we issue payment.
Why don't we make the payment date contingent upon the receipt of insurance certificate?
Right, we can do that and that would just eliminate.
So once we get insurance certificate, thirty days after that.
It it's almost like closing. You get the deed when I get the cash.
Yeah, so we can remove the uh time window and we'll just put payments can are contingent on receiving.
And I just think moving forward, all contracts, we should make sure that we have insurance in place prior to issue any type of payment. Cuz that prevent us coming, you know, just all contracts. It's important.
In reference to, was that, I don't wanna jump in on you.
No, it's okay.
Okay, are you done? Okay, so much. You're sorry. Uh on exhibit B, do we have all of those documents? Or are those forthcoming?
Uh they're forthcoming. Uh Main Street Apopka is uh ready to provide those at our request.
Okay, do we have, where 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 are we at? I'm sorry. Exhibit B.
Oh, okay.
Can we see the exhibits before we vote on this contract? Do we have copies of you? Do we have the copies of this exhibit B?
Uh we can provide them. She has them available.
You have them available. Is there a reason why they wasn't included in this in this agreement?
Uh the the way I understood it, these are gonna be provided uh in the reporting function of the contract. So we can, but she does have them available.
So these can be, if we can make this contingent upon, we won't approve this or more so won't be.
I believe if you wanna put it contingently in, just like the last one, if you'd like us to receive those documents before payments processed, we can certainly do that and I can certainly share that with the council if that's the wish.
Absolutely. As long as we get those and 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 the uh the timeline for insurance.
So we can, we will provide a couple of updates to the agreement uh specifying that exhibits and uh or the items in exhibit B we provided prior to issuing of the payment.
Yep, and just just also asking prior to any other contracts that we have all the exhibits to review them. Because even with it being provided to, we still don't, if we don't agree with something or have questions about something, we've already executed this agreement. And when we don't have any oversight after we already executed the agreement.
Okay, yeah. Let me just pull the list up again on what those were. Oh, so uh Florida Department of Revenue Registration, IRS federal tax status, copy of the current bylaws, copy of current roster, board of directors, certificate of assurance, um Department of Agricultural Solicitation, Solicitation Contribution Certificate, and an air to report organizational activities over the course of fiscal year.
Because for example, their current bylaws is is against some of our city policies. We've already executed this contract.
Wait, say that again?
If we have, so their current bylaws, right? We wanna copy the bylaws cuz we wanna look at the bylaws and kinda see, you know, that's how the organization is governed. So if we don't see, we are agreeing to exhibit B and we haven't seen any of these documents and we're executing a contract.
Well, that's what that's what I'm saying. Make this contract contingent upon the receipt of those. Those are sent to us and maybe a every commissioner sends an email back, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good.
Cuz so the cuz the exhibit does ask for annual reporting minimum requirements. So that was what those were to be intended to be included in annual report.
Okay. I think that if we can make it, let's i- if this gets approved tonight, make a contingent upon the receipt and approval from each board member through an email or or call.
Yeah, we can. Like I said, uh Main Street Apopka is agreeable to to doing that. They have all the documents in order, so.
Any any other questions for Radley?
Is there a reason? Do they have the documents? I'm just 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 for questions. Is there a reason why they we didn't receive and they were uploaded so we can view them if they're all available now?
Um again, this was just for the annual reporting uh minimum standards, which annual report would be at at the end of the year. So.
It's the exhibit B. That's the annual reports. But the copy of your uh IRS federal taxes, your copy of your bylaws, that that's something that they have now.
Right, so.
And we should have these anyways.
Caitlin, do you have those with you? I know, I was gonna say, you had them here. I could go buy it as my pro.
No, it's okay. It's fine. This is just for all contracts. Is that cuz we are all we're agreeing upon stuff. We don't.
Yeah, understood. And that and this one falls on me cuz we did have discussion about this. Yeah, and uh again, the intention of what I understood exhibit B was for an annual report. Annual report typically comes after the works, you know, it's like a recap report. So definitely understand though.
Some of this stuff is kind of.
Definitely understand. Yeah, definitely understand that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's it. And that's move forward all contracts. Just asking that.
Any other questions for Radley? Caitlin, you wanna come up? Just give us a.
Well, thank you so much, Caitlin Keshad of Main Street Apopka. Uh thank you so much for your support all of these two years now that we've been working and trying to put our program together and building it. Uh it's meant a lot to us as volunteers to have your support backing us and, you know, we've been even though this is the first time the agreement's coming to you all, uh we've been working on the verbiage of this for about a year, a little over a year now between all of the department heads that have come and gone. And so it's really exciting for us and we're really thankful that it's landed on the agenda. So thank you all so much. Uh like I said, you'll see all those documents in your email tonight as soon as I get home uh for your review. And please, if you have feedback, I am totally open to it as always. So please let me know. Um and then what was the other thing? Forget, there was something else. The insurance. Yes, we're prepared to purchase that as soon as this is agreed upon. So again, you'll find everything in your email pretty much twenty-four hours after this is all agreed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alright, anybody from the public?
Leroy Bell, Bart Helen. You know, it's it's pathetic. This been going on for two years. Bradley just stood up here and on exhibit A, he came in, he was he was filling out a copy of the bylaws uh certificate of insurance for two years. One main thing that we've asked for that goes with this package and it haven't never been produced. And that's a copy of the IRS federal tax, the five oh one C three. And it's just like she's the young lady just come up. Oh, you can have this in your mail by tonight. This been going on for two years. The same way you be amending budget, you asking for seventy thousand dollars just in case you need it down the road. You putting a horse, the cart ahead of the horse. All these paper, all this paperwork should be turned in. Every last thing on this exhibit should be checked before any money is dispensed to Main Street. A copy of the uh uh a copy of the reg- uh ro- roster and the board. That's important. Citizens wanna know where they money going to, who's on the board. And it's it's sickening that you guys are set up and will respond back to certain people. Sylvester just stood up here and asked a question to Commissioner Smith. Sylvester just stood up here and asked a question to Commissioner Smith. You sat up there and looked at him like, not on the law. It's pathetic, but I promise you, it ain't gonna end like this, it's not gonna end well that you showing. Certain treatment to certain citizens, the other one, you're looking down your nose. Remember, March is coming up, and all three of you.
Rogers back at seven, West Main Street. I guess my, my question is, um, who's gonna oversee this program? Um, is it gonna be under the CRA director? Is it under the Community Development Director? Is it under economic, economic development director? Um, then secondly, is this something that's gonna be annually funded? And if so, is it other entities that come and apply for this? Or is it, you know, like, is it a set budget amount? Cause I'm just trying to figure out, I'm looking at this, it says it need to include a work plan and update, but what does that coincide with? Does it coincide with the community real development plan? And just how does it, it meshes to the goals and objective of what plan that is pulling from? If it's gonna be applying to the CRA, so that's what's my question, or is this, uh, general fund? Money going to this particular program, or is it coming from a pot of money from the CRA, just for clarification?
Sylvester Hall, Rock Springs Ridge, it's, uh, it's very clear that we have a double standard. Main Street, Main Street, I'm in support of it one hundred percent. But there's procedures, rules, guidelines that we abide by. And to see we so blatantly let things slide on some, and some of them, we got our foot on the neck saying, you gotta have all this, you gotta have all that. And we're getting ready to give out, if it had been brought up by the public and others. And by Commissioner Anderson there, we're getting ready to vote on something, we don't even have all the, the bylaws, we don't know. We don't have all the information. And like Mr. Bell says, it's been two years working into this. And so. I do everything I can to promote growth in Apoka. And if any business owner need help, need guideline, if we're partnering with them, trying to, to help them out. We do that, so it don't make them look incompetent when they come here. And then the public gotta point out these things that you guys should already know. How many times have we sat back there and heard, uh, did you see this? No, I haven't seen this, did we get it? Oh, no, for some reason, I didn't, it didn't make it to your inbox, come on. You're all professionals. And that's basic one-on-one when you're sharing information, but then somehow it get left out. Oh, I, I don't, this, it just keep happening, and it shouldn't. So please hold to a standard that we all can uplift all business when they come in here. And to be a cornerstone for improving downtown, because it definitely needed. But this is not how you do it, this is not how you work with people. And then, I said it before, you know, y'all treat us like dumbasses. Like we sitting back there, we clueless. And this is not right, this is not right. I expect better for the public, I expect better for this administration. And Mayor, you can shuffle all the books you want. Disrespect me when I'm up here talking, cause you ain't got time to listen to what this black guy's telling you. But all three of y'all are up for reelection, and I'm gonna do everything in my power to make sure none of y'all get back in that seat.
Can I just, uh, add something to this, um, cause I have the whole package here. On October second, twenty twenty-four, when, uh. She originally came in, um, Ms. Cachada came in. It was marked on the fifth license. And you did provide this book to each of us, am I correcting that? It has all the information? And I still have that, and then, um, you did send an email to each of us when you received this, which was. You, I received your email on three twenty-one, and it was sent to all of us, and it is the five oh one C three. So we did get that, but it was just not in today's package. And I know that the book had your board of directors, it just doesn't have an updated one, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Alright, I, um, I'm a hundred percent in support of Main Street of Apoka. Caitlin, I've been to every event you've had, I supported. However, I think it's time that the city, so this is not against Main Street of Apoka, this is general. Can we please have something either in writing that any organization could review? On what are your policies, what are the steps to get? Because it, it's embarrassing that this is publicly made to hear someone now coming up. And now going to, does not have insurance, going to purchase, because that was not requested in advance. When some organizations come before you guys and are requested certain documents. Before you guys will even speak to the organization. Or we go back and forth, provide everything, and then get denied, but then some, so it's not against. Main Street, this is talking in general, when some do not have everything presented. But they get moved to the next, um, level, so can you guys, it would be nice where, instead of. Because I'm sure if someone comes to one commissioner and asks a question, they get one answer. Come to the next one, as, at a different time, ask the same question, gets a different answer. Can we have something where it's a standard policy for everyone? So no one feels like, well, they're entitled, while another group feels they're less than. Or they don't meet them, eh, we're all trying, every organization in Apoka is trying to do something. For the people of Apoka, to make Apoka one of the best cities in Florida, so. Can we just have something standard for everyone?
And just to respond to that, um, that has been, and I did speak to that regarding having a policy. Uh, for our nonprofit organizations. I did ask with the ci- previous, uh, uh, chief administrator, and I recently did ask. Our interim regarding a policy. I think it's important, and tonight proves why we need a policy.
I'm Clinton Stanley, and like I said, I hear earlier, we have a hundred thousand dollars in the city budget for nonprofit organization. Are we gonna co, are we gonna put together a committee, a committee base for the people? The people be the committee, non-profit organization or the citizens of Apoka. Create a committee with the citizens of Apoka, how that money's gonna be dispersed, and who is it get allocated to? Because it's set aside, and we don't have no clear understanding on how to get it. I know it's in the city budget, if I'm not mistaken, is it in the city budget? And we coming back up on another budget year, and that money hasn't been used yet, right?
Correct.
So how in the world you have money sitting there, and we have no idea how to get it? It was sat there, and it was put to the side for what reason? So you can have certain people or a certain committee put together to get it? Who's gonna be, who's gonna be in charge of sitting down and giving the information to the people on how to tap into that money? And tell how to get that funded, where is it gonna get allocated to? Can anybody explain that to me? Can nobody explain that to me? You have a hundred thousand dollars there for nonprofit organization, I'm a nonprofit organization. We in need of some funding, we are one organization I know for a fact that's in need of funding. Even if it's crime prevention, something, because what we're doing, we're preventing crime, because we're giving kids somewhere to go. We're giving them something to do, and you're telling me you have a hundred thousand dollars sitting there, and it can't, nobody tell me how we can get it. Can't nobody tell me how we can get it?
Mayor, can we, can we work on something, cause I know that's one of the things, so I think that if you can kinda work with staff, we go to outline, so we can figure, cause I know a lot of nonprofits have definitely been reaching out about it, so.
Cause I'm saying, cause you, 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 you're gonna figure out how, cause I'm looking at you saying you got fifty thousand dollars, so you, you're telling me how? Is, is it gonna come out of that hundred thousand dollars?
No, that's different.
So, if you got money sitting there, how can we get it? Cause I'm being honest, we in need of it. Can you allocate some of that to South Apoka youth sports? Can you allocate some of that funding to us, because we need it for field rentals? We need it for a lot of different things to help prevent crime in the area. Because we need, we are a safe haven for the youth to go, we are a safe haven. And we need to be funded, and if you got money there to help us, why can't you help us? That's, I mean, I'm, 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 I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm being humble as I can, and I know y'all not used to me being this humble. But we have the funding there, let's figure it out, just how you figure out everything else. Let's figure out how can we spend this money, how can we allocate some of this funding to nonprofit organization? And I ain't talking about next year, because the, the next budget year is up in July, June or July? It ends in September.
Before the next city council meeting, can you kinda put something together to present to the council? Okay.
So, yeah, we need something in place, how can we get that funding, because we actually need it.
Next city council meeting, he's gonna have something, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I have, yeah, I already had the outline already.
You had, um, recommended three hundred thousand dollars, and since then, there's been no.
Yeah, so I'll get with, um, Blanche, cause I know we talked about it before.
Okay, um, alright, uh, let's see here, what's the, uh, looking for a motion to approve the funding agreement?
Well, no, that's gonna be contingent on, um, when she presents the insurance policy.
Okay, so motion to approve the funding agreement with Main Street, contingent on.
And exhibit B.
And exhibit B.
And exhibit B, but she, I have to say this, that she did send each of us.
The five oh one C three.
The five oh one C three, because the letter said, dear, uh, to all the council members, and I have it here.
Alright.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson, second, second by Commissioner Blazkis, all those in favor? All opposed, I, so four to one.
Um, why do you oppose that?
I just think that we've got CRA, and we've got our Fifth Street merchants that can handle it, so. Okay, next up, um.
What, what is the CRA doing that's similar?
Police Department and School Board of Orange County.
What is the CRA doing that's similar, and why didn't you bring this up during the discussion?
Yeah.
Your votes are always so secret, i- it makes no sense, this is, you say transparency, clearly there's none, in, in the fact that you won't answer my questions right now. Disrespectful.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening, um, before you, is the school resource officer contract with Orange County Public Schools. For the twenty-five, twenty-six school year and the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, it outlines the funding for each year for each SRO. Uh, the, I outlined in the staff report, the main changes in the agreement that has been accepted by Orange County Public Schools. And the primary one is that if they get any safe school funding from the state, that that will be split between the school board. And the law enforcement agencies, uh, in the past years, they've kept that money to themselves, uh, but now under the contract, it'll be split. Uh, under the terms of the agreement between the law enforcement agencies and, uh, the school board. So, that's a major change, other than that, it's pretty much the same as it always is.
Any questions for the chief? Anybody from the public should speak on this one, not close the public hearing, for motion approved the agreement between APD and OCPS for the assignment of school resource officers, SROs.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
I.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next up, contract ITB twenty twenty-four dash A dash thirty-four, Blanche.
Blanche Sherman, Finance Director, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Um, the item before you is to award the contract, ITB twenty twenty-four A thirty-four. Um, for the CDBG grant, um, for the rehab of home number five to RDC Development. Of course, I've shared with you some information, because of the questions that you had. In regards to the cost of this rehab compared to a previous rehab. Um, um, I don't know if you've had time to look at those items, but I do have David Fox here. He can share with you some of the details, um, behind, you know, what's included. In that rehab compared to what's included in the other one. Um, he, what he briefly shared with me is that the re- the rehab that was for forty-five K was more of accessibility. You know, and this one included a lot more like structural damage and everything such as that. David, do you mind? David Fox with Fox Enterprise.
Good evening, David Fox with Fred Fox Enterprise. The, uh, home at four seventy East Eighth Street has, uh, roof leaks, been there for a while apparently. House was built in seventy, I believe seventy-seven, yeah, nineteen seventy-seven. It's got the original electrical, intro, original plumbing, um, the roof's been leaking for a while, you got structural damage on the roof. Framing, you've got bad sheathing, you've got sheet rock falling off on the ceiling, the interior needs new plumbing. Um, the envelope itself is blocked, and it's in good shape. But the interior pretty much is, besides the kitchen, the bathroom's gonna be pretty much gutted, interior sheet rock, ceiling, insulation. The home that came in, the original that you approved previously for, um, uh, was more, uh, that was like, I think it was forty-five. It only included handicap accessibility and enlarging a couple of doors and painting the exterior. House is newer, roof was maybe a year old, electrical plumbing, the house probably isn't ten years old, and it was in good shape. That's why the price difference, one is in the top end of the, in minor rehab. And the one that's being proposed now is a whole, is a mo- a major rehab. So, that's the difference, I mean, in my estimate compared to the ones in my estimate compared to this one. A lot more detailed work in this one, and under the program, we can't address just certain things, you gotta address code violation, health and safety issues. Um, section eight housing standards, you can't go in there like with a ship program or another funding program and just fix the roof, you have to address everything.
Environmental, so like, got.
Yeah, it's gotta be health and safety, you've gotta have, address all the, um, any code violations, any health issues, gotta make sure it's got a working kitchen. Bathroom, so it meets HUD section eight standards, and those are guidelines for the Community Development Blog Grant Program.
Any questions for either David or Blanche on this?
I have just questions for you, Blanche, I don't have any questions for you.
Any, any, any questions for Dave? Yeah, I, I do, and thank you for, for being here tonight, your expertise is valuable. So there's, there's a lot more that we're allowed to do with the CDBG grants, correct, other than just renovating houses?
Yeah, there's other categories, you can only have one, uh, a usual cycle, you can either have a neighborhood, commercial, or housing. Um, and you'll come and apply for one, and then once you've got one open, you can't apply for another one until it's done.
So this one's explicitly.
This is housing, this is a housing rehab grant.
Okay, so we can't use it for.
As you got a housing open, and you're in a regular cycle, then you can't have a commercial or neighborhood. You can do an ED, an economic development every year, but having a housing, commercial, or, or neighborhood project. You can only do one at a time, and you can't do one of the three ca- only one of the three categories until you finish.
I understand, so like, if we wanted to do, cause I, I'm reading from, um, HUD's website. Construction of public facilities and improvements such as water and sewer facilities, streets, neighborhood centers, and converted school buildings, that's a.
The neighborhood violation category.
Okay, have we ever, do we apply for those?
Um, you have it under with us, I'm sure you did previously, we've only worked through this, through this one program, we've worked with you through the, a housing grant. And you had, um, and you had a program for, you were addressing sidewalk improvements through COVID relief.
Okay, so.
Two, I'm, we've worked with you with.
Theoretically, moving forward, is it fiscal years or is it calendar years?
The way it works is. The way it works is once you close one out, they never have, the cycle's never on this, it's a fiscal year.
Okay.
Applying for fiscal year funding. But the, the application sometime like this year, they were due last week. Last year they were due in October. They're never the same time. So you can't say, we're gonna get done by this date. They give you forty-five days of notice and then the application cycle opens.
So, a- and thank you for that information. If we wanted to. Start some type of like septic to sewer program in this area, would a neighborhood grant program be a viable option for that?
Yeah, you, your maximum right now, the maximum you can apply for is seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
Um, under a cycle. Unless you're doing economic development, you have to have a developer and that one's one point five million. But under the neighborhood.
So if we had an economic development director, we would have access potentially to one point five million dollars?
You could apply for up to one point five under that category alone. Yep, under economic development.
Wow. And so because we don't, we don't have access to those funds?
You would have to have a developer on board. You, actually, when you're applying for economic development funds. You've got a developer on board saying they're gonna bring jobs into the city. And you're gonna provide them infrastructure improvements to their property line in most cases to provide those jobs.
Okay, so you could easily back into a plan with that, but because we don't have that, um.
For every job they create, you can apply for thirty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And at least fifty-one percent of the jobs, say, the people taking those jobs must have been low to moderate income prior to getting that job. You don't keep them down in that job, but. The job prior, or the income prior to the previous year, they had to be low to moderate, at least fifty-one percent.
Okay, so then next, next fiscal year. And I guess we can discuss this more and, uh, as a board and, and with staff of applying instead for the. Residential renovation one, we could do the neighborhood one potentially to start a. Program to do septic to sewer, cause I know that's. Uh, something that we need to be focusing on as well as a city in the future, long term.
Yeah, what you could do is once you close out this one, you could, you'll have a public hearing. You'll go over the categories, the housing, uh, neighborhood and commercial and the ED, economic development. And you'll get public input. From there, you'll decide if you want to move forward with an application and what category. And you'll develop, well, develop, or whoever you hire will develop an application for you. They'll have to do to verify that that area is low to moderate income, at least fifty-one percent. Cause you have to at least fifty-one percent low to moderate income benefit to meet a threshold requirement for applying. And by once you determine that, you can either do it by census data, if it's in a full census tract. Or you can do it by door-to-door survey. But once you determine that your area is fifty-one percent. You've got a project that you want to utilize, uh, for seven hundred and fifty thousand, and that can include, uh, if you go in with plans and design, you get additional fifty points. It's a point competition.
Sure.
If you're shovel ready, also saying you get fifty points. Uh, if you put in fifty thousand unleveraged, you get twenty-five points. So it's a bunch of different aspects to that.
Okay.
To how you get competitive, but.
Okay, understood. Thank you for that. And I do think down the road in, in our next round of applying, I really think we should consider that, especially in this area, cause. There's no programs to do in septic to sewer within our kind of CDBG CRA area. So I think that's very, uh, important. That we initiate something long-term there. In reference to this specific property. Would, would it make sense to spend a little more money? To completely redo the house, to, to have a new house versus really kind of Frankensteining a house?
The only thing you're not doing in this house is kitchen cabinets. You're dressing the plumbing, you're dressing the flooring, you're dressing the sheet rock, shingles, uh. Painting. The only thing you're not doing is, she's gonna have old, will be the kitchen cabinets. We're repairing them, but we're not replacing. We're already at such a price point. That we didn't call to replace the kitchen cabinets.
And that's because of our limitation of funds?
That, and she was happy with her cabinet. She was, she wanted to keep them.
Oh, okay.
All right. Any other questions for David or for Blanche? Okay.
No, I mean, I've already discussed through an agenda review, um, I'll still stand on, I think these numbers are inflated. I think this, when I looked at the scope of work, a lot of the cost was marked up. More than thirty percent above what usually contractors, um, place on scopes of work, but. I, I, it's, it's a no for me. I think we need to put a bid back out. We only had one bidder actually. Bidded on this, and I think that we probably can get more bang for our buck if we put it back out. I think a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for renovations on a property to me is definitely obsessive. So in looking at the scope of work, there's a lot of duplicate things in the, in the scope and, um, I think it's overbidded.
But let me ask this, Blanche, with our three general contractor, I mean, I, 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 I understand what Commissioner Anderson's saying. With the three contractors we have, or four contractors we have on that are.
Ten or eleven, yeah.
Well, I mean, but that, that are in the residential sphere, could we? Could we get bids from them now or are we, we're?
It's not city property.
Huh?
They, they talking about the GCs that we have, that's, it's for city facilities. These are not, this is not city.
But I know, okay.
And they're, keep in mind, we got to follow the requirements of this grant.
Which are, which are owners at, at best.
Very much so.
Yes, federal governments.
Mm-hmm.
You know, as we've found on many of the grants, you know, they're, the strings they attach to your, your funding are sometimes not even worth.
Yeah. Exactly.
Funds that you're getting.
And we have to go through Florida Commerce, follow their rules, which is what, um, Mr. Fox just shared with you and.
And the estimate, what, what was the estimate of that was given? Through them for this repairs was ninety-five thousand?
Well, that was an estimate that, um, David had based on his inspection of the house. The. Florida Commerce had, um, an estimate of sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand.
Correct.
And we had a hundred and, almost a hundred and sixty thousand, so that's a hundred thousand over.
Once again, David Fox, Fred Fox, sixty thousand, you have a housing assistance plan that you submitted with your application.
David, David, get over the mic, please.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
David Fox, Fred Fox Enterprise. You had a housing assistance plan or half when you applied for your application for funding for the housing grant. In your housing assistance plan, it said that if you exceed sixty thousand in a rehab, it's not a maximum, but you just have to, council has to note it when they approve it. That they understand they're exceed, exceeding the sixty thousand noted in the housing assistance plan. It's not to discourage you from going over sixty, it's just to let you know. You doubt, that's what's included in your half. And you're exceeding that amount.
Oh, I know, I understand that. I just still think the prices are inflated.
Yeah, the.
And the cost of the scope of work is just, is just doesn't cost that to do what you're doing. Which I, I get it. I mean, you probably, I mean, you're the only bidder, so you don't have any competition. That's why I'm requesting that we put it back out for more competitive.
Do we have deadlines associated with this? Do we have deadlines? Can we go back out to bid to have somebody do this or is it?
Can we, Blanche? Do we have a deadline? Can we ta- put it back out the bid or the funds have to do?
We can't go back out the bid. And yes, we do have deadlines, but we've gotten extensions. You know, on these grants before, so.
Would, but that would then delay applying for other programs at that point, correct? Or other?
As, and, cause it won't be closed out.
Right.
So what's, thirty, you're talking about thirty day extension? To put this back out, how long will it take to put this back out? For bid?
Well, if, I would think we have the specs, so if we go back in the current market, you know, it shouldn't take long, thirty to forty-five days.
You're talking about thirty to forty-five days potentially, you know, be able to use these funds for.
Yes, and.
More residence.
Correct.
Now, does the, the resident that's there, uh. Would that resident, that, they would have to move out during this time, correct?
I don't think this person, as I understand it, this particular individual did not want to rebuild. Okay, and I don't know if she's gonna have to move out of her house for this rehab.
I mean, if they're doing drywall and, and all that.
It's not that, I mean, will she?
It can be dusty.
Something about this.
That'll be up to the contractor in most cases, but usually their liability, they're gonna have, of course, they move out.
And so is. Is the feedback that we're getting from the resident, she does not want to do that?
She did not want to rebuild is what I have been told.
Well, I don't think we're asking for a rebuild. We're asking that we put the.
I'm just saying from my staff.
We're not asking for a rebuild though.
I know, but I'm saying, I know you want to rebid.
Rebid.
Yes. But once, when, earlier when we were comparing the cost of this with a. You know, rebuild, that's when that, um, conversation came up.
What was the? How, how big is her house? Uh, how many square feet?
Contractor?
Really?
Is he a contractor?
No.
Oh.
He's the, he's the, he's the grant manager.
We can rebid it.
Rebid it out.
Well, I'm just gonna say, I'm just trying to get a, a feel for like.
It's not, it's, it's small. It's not that big. The home is not that big.
The one we just did that, that, um, Lamar Hughley's doing was like, what was that, two, two forty? Riley, what was the?
It was, I think it was around there. Um, now I just remember, uh, Mr. Fox said, indicate it's basically a rebuild. I think everything other than the block wall.
No.
And the kitchen are pretty much gonna have to be redone, so.
But not the external.
Right, not the external walls.
Is there a budget in here though for her relocation, temp- or temporary housing?
I don't think we pay for that, but.
The grant allows, under the grant program, under your housing assistance plan. It will allow for you to put, uh, pay for a monthly storage unit on her site or she, uh, off-site if there's not enough room for her. And it'll pay her a hundred and, I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars a month to help with whoever she's staying with. With utilities, but it's not, it does not pay rent. It does not pay you temporary housing.
Okay. I mean, maybe that's the reason chief.
Have we court, uh, have we echoed that to her? That, I mean, this is an extensive. Extensive project. And it was my understanding too, there's asbestos remediation that has to occur.
Let me make that correction. Yes, that was shared with you because that's what was shared with me, but they were referring to the other house.
Okay, so that's not this one, okay.
That's not, that wasn't in the scope.
I didn't see it either, but she, it was referenced during my review, so. Okay.
Okay, but if we didn't get one bid the first time?
Yes.
Is there a possibility we're gonna get more than one this time?
Anything is likely. Anything is likely.
Well, they're seeing that we, we're, we're gonna be paying a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we probably get more interest. If they see we'll prove, was about to prove one fifty-seven.
And, and let me share this with you. The, the contractor, RDC, did say that they would hold their price, but. They did put some contendencies out there that, you know, the new tariffs and material costs increase may be a factor. So. And so, I mean, I understand the purpose of rebid.
Sure.
Yeah, the longer you hold out, the price is gonna go down, it's gonna go up.
Exactly.
Well, they've already put like a fifty percent markup anyway, so. I'm just one vote, so it's a pleasure to put the rest of the board. I'm just, I'm not.
And, and I think, uh, staff shared with me today, I don't have the details. But I think it's one of the, I don't know which one of them, we're having some problems with. And we may end up rebidding that one anyway.
What problems and what problems?
I don't know, I don't have the details.
I mean, I feel like you should expect me to.
I know, I know, but I, I, I'm trying to be, you know, transparent, but I'm just sharing with you. I don't have, I don't, they're still, and plus we have to go through the process. You know, of giving them, you know.
The, the four. That we've funded or approved, one of those is having a problem.
One of them, one of them. I'll get you the details. I just don't have them written down. Okay, I just wanted to be transparent because if we rebid and you see the rebid go out for both of them, that'd be why.
But that may change our funding availability then too, correct?
It may.
So then we can't make an educated decision on this current one then? Until we figure out that variable?
It, it, it can increase the funding.
And we can use that, the money for the markup to probably help offset the other one.
If it comes back within, indeed markup.
All right, I'm looking for some direction here.
How much have we contributed as a city? Cause it's a fifty thousand dollar match, correct?
Fifty thousand dollar match, um, ARP funds in about about two hundred and five thousand. And we're looking at another, with, based on the estimate that we had another twenty-seven thousand.
All right.
And this resident has an actively leaking roof, correct?
That's my understanding that her roof's leaking. That's what caused some of the water damage.
That gone, gone away.
Yeah, so if we put it out to rebid, chief, the resident is gonna have to wait till we get the bids back, so that's what, another thirty?
Yeah, it'll be another forty-five to sixty days delay, yes.
So we would be inconveniencing, but right now if we were to start working. On the house, it would be immediate.
Yeah, I got you.
But the resident does not want to.
Well, we have to go through an environmental assessment as well. That's one of the statements that I plan to read, so that, that normally takes. That sixty days is what Da- um, David is saying.
How is that funded?
The environmental.
So.
Part of their contract.
So we have to do environmental study anyway.
Yes.
For sixty days. So during that time, we got to bid out. So we will not delay anything.
Okay.
Yeah.
So David, could we, could we do those simultaneously? I mean.
Yeah.
Cause there's nothing stopping us to coming back to this contractor and saying.
Unless he doesn't want to hold his price.
I'm pretty sure you can find some of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to renovate inside a house and put a roof on.
Correct.
All right.
Okay.
You wanna make a motion to rebid it? Let's just get on with this.
So.
Okay.
A motion to rebid. What is it?
I see here, which one?
What was that?
Two.
ITB two zero two four dash eight dash three four.
Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson.
So.
Second by Commissioner Blazkis. All those in favor? Aye.
Okay, can't make this so, so easy, thank you.
Those opposed. Okay.
Sorry.
Unanimous. Pretty weak, weak unanimous. Okay, next up. Selection of Sunova's Bank for Solicitation, RFP twenty-two-five dash A dash one eighty.
Thank you, Mayor, um, and Commissioners, um. As a part of the Emerson Park Special Assessment Process, we did.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thanks, David.
Mm-hmm. Oh God, we forgot. Oh boy.
Can we go back to that?
Yeah, we, we need, yeah, we absolutely need to. All right, come on.
Uh, that was a thank you, Mr. Hall, for bringing it to our attention.
You know, Dave, you're fine. You can go. Dave, go. Okay.
Sylvester Hall, for the, uh, fourth, the fourth location, what was the address again?
Twenty-eight West Eighth Street.
I thought.
No, that's, that's one of the original.
That's the fourth, the four, seven.
The fifth, for the fifth.
Four, seven, East Eighth Street.
If, East Eighth Street?
Yes.
Okay, now, on the other four that we have in progress. Do we have an update on? The status where we at? Who's going out overseeing, overlooking the property, monitoring it? Who's doing the quality assurance? See, all these things that we talking about, how we don't want the city to get ripped off. But on other projects, we look the other way.
They follow the same.
When we talking about the residents, we don't want them to get ripped off. Now look at this going on. Who's overseeing it?
We, we always.
Who's, who's, who's the QA?
We do.
So when we say, okay, what's the status? Somebody should be able to come up and give us the status right now on every property. On all four property. So when.
Representative here, once you're finished, I think he'll be able to.
Yeah, so once, when. When our financial officers come up here. And say, I, 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 I got it, but you know, when you come here, you're supposed to be ready and equipped with these things. If you're gonna mention it, you should have your documentation ready. That's just being professional. A hundred and. What it was, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars? To rebuild, gut. Now, you know, call me boo boo the fool, but maybe I watch a little bit too, too much TV on flip this house. Rebuild this old house. Where you turn an egg into a golden goose? And I look at the, the thing. So when we out shopping our dollars for these contracts. We're trying to get the best for our residents and we're trying to get the best for the city of Park. And thank you for recognizing that, that is too much money. Thank you, Commissioner Anderson, for recognizing that. And then we need to rebid it. Because we want to get quality work at a great price. I don't expect to pay peanut price and want quality work. But in the same town, we must apply common sense. So if you have no expertise in the area of how much it costs to rebuild and remodel a home. Then you're closest when you're making these decisions. And you're not moving in, in, in a direction. That best benefit the, the resident and the city of Park. So I would, I would like to just see, you know, some type of organization, some type of, you know, when you come to these and you present, you put us, present the whole product to us. Let us know the status and let us know what's going on. And then too. Well, I'll just leave it at that. If you can give me the update, I greatly appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay.
Say, you're about to come up and get assistance? Let him come up and get assistance.
I just said, I asked if anybody else want to speak on this matter? Okay, David.
Once again, David Fox or Fred Fox Enterprise. I'll just give it to you by address.
Um, one eighteen West Eighth Street, the house is, uh, under contract, of course, permits have been received. They've moved out, uh, the asbestos abatement was completed, the clearance inspector came in for the asbestos abatement yesterday. He's, he's, he's reviewing it, and to get us a clearance, we can move forward with demolition. Um, I do weekly inspections of all the homes while they're under construction, I get with the homeowners, I work with them. We don't do any prepayment under this program, it's all, uh, works done, and then release the liens and then paid. Seven oh eight South Washington Avenue. That one, the house is up, the sheet rock was completed, or mud and taped and sanded, and it's getting textured later this week. So it's gonna be ready and for interior painting, and it should be complete in the next thirty days, hopefully. Um, eleven sixty-five DeClava Drive is a rehab, it's been completed. Twenty-eight West Eighth Street, we had to rebid that one, but it has, uh, under contract. And the permits have been submitted for, the contractors working out additional items requested by the, um, building department. And then, of course, that last one, we're gonna rebid.
Right. Alright, thanks, alright, now I guess we need to go back and motion to rebid that, uh, Commissioner Anderson, go with your motion. Commissioner Blasquez, second, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Alright, Sonovus Bank, thank.
Okay. Resolution number twenty twenty-five eight, uh, Sonovus Bank for solicitation, R F P twenty twenty-five eight dash one eighty. Um, the solicitation was issued on April seventeenth. Uh, we had inquiries on April thirtieth, the submittal deadline was May eighth. We had seventeen hundred and thirty-eight notified users, we emailed a hundred and fifty-three banks. Um, it was viewed by three hundred and fifty-three and followed by fifteen, however, we only had one response, and that was with Sonovus. And I have Mr. Joel Tindell, our financial advisor, who'll give you an overview of the results of that R F P.
Thank you, Blanch.
Good evening, uh, my name is Joel Tindell with, uh, I'm managing director with Hilltop Securities, we serve as financial advisor to the city. Just to give you a brief overview, as Blanch mentioned, um, as financial advisor, we assisted, assisted the city uh, with the R F P for a bank loan proposal, for the primary purpose of financing the improvements to the roadway, um, in the Emerson Park, or benefiting the Emerson Park subdivision. The request asked for a loan not to exceed two point eight million, a term through, uh, twenty forty, roughly fifteen years. And a non-bank qualified tax exempt fixed rate for the entire term of the loan. We also had, uh, requested the ability to prepay the loan without penalty as part of the request. And the security, uh, and source repayment for the loan is the special assessments um, levied within the, uh, Emerson Park Assessment Area. And as Blanch mentioned, on May eighth, uh, the responses were due, and the city received one response from Sonovus Bank. And so Sonovus Bank, uh, is, they're being recommended for the proposed loan, um, primarily, or for the purpose of providing fixed rate for the entire term of the loan, four point four eight percent through twenty forty, uh, an interest rate that's held through the anticipated closing, uh, which is, uh, June sixth. No debt service reserve fund requirement, um, no set aside of proceeds upfront, or cash upfront for the debt service. And then the ability to prepay the loan at any time without penalty. So this slide gives you just a summary overview of what the financing results look like. So on the top, uh, right-hand quadrant, you can see the estimated principal amount of the loan, about two point two million. Net construction cost, just over two million, uh, assessment development costs, about a hundred and fifty thousand, and then closing costs of just under seventy thousand. Down on the bottom right-hand side, you can see, uh, interest rate of four point four eight percent, as we discussed. Um, all N T I C, which is similar to, let's ca, let's say like an A P R on a mortgage, um, or A P Y, but, um, that's factoring in the closing costs of roughly seventy thousand, the, the effective borrowing rate's about four ninety-three. So total interest over life is just under nine hundred thousand, total debt service of three point one million. Uh, max annual debt service of about two hundred and ten thousand, and you can see the amortization schedule in a graphic form on the bottom left there. So it's roughly, uh, equal payments, um, over the next fifteen fiscal years. In comparing that to what was included in the, uh, assessment report prepared by Stan Tech, uh, dated March eleventh, you can see the original estimates, similar net construction cost, um, with the updated estimate, no need for debt service reserve funds, that was eliminated. We don't have the requirement based on our closing payment schedule, et cetera, for capitalized interest. And then both the closing costs and the assessment development co, related costs have, uh, come down, um, from those original estimates. What does that mean for the assessments themselves? If you look down at the bottom, uh, the original, uh, report that they included, had an estimated rate of five percent, we're at four point four eight percent here. A total estimated annual cost, uh, is just under two hundred and twenty-six thousand now, versus just under two hundred and ninety-six thousand, so about seventy thousand less annually, when you factor in, um, some additional costs for the early payment discounts and tax collector fees, et cetera. So for the individual dwelling unit, that's a reduction, uh, an estimated reduction of about a hundred and forty thou, or a hundred and forty dollars a year over that fifteen-year period from what was originally, um, estimated in that assessment report. And so the next steps, um, subject to your, uh, approval of the selection of Sonov, Sonovus Bank to move forward, the financing team, bond counsel, will start preparing the, uh, resolution to present to the, uh, to present to you all next, um, meeting on June fourth. And then pending that approval, we'd look to close and actually fund the financing that Friday on June sixth. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you all may have.
Any questions? Okay, anybody from the public who should speak on this one?
I, I had a couple of quick questions. The, when is the first payment due?
It is, the first payment will be due January first of twenty twenty-six. So the assessments will begin being collected with the November tax bill. And so you'll, in general, most taxes kind of come in on the earlier part of the, uh, the, the tax cycle because of the early payment discounts. So you'll, it's structured with a small interest payment, an interest-only payment, January first, and then a larger principal and interest payment, July first, so that comes after the tax process, tax, uh, sale, uh.
So there could be a scenario where we're fronting a little bit of this?
Typically, with this structure, typically not, so, eh, with a January, with a small January payment, um, and just to give you an idea, I know we included some, some, uh, for the num, I believe the preliminary numbers were included in the packet, but just to give you an idea, on January first of twenty twenty-six, the estimated interest is about fifty-seven thousand.
I see that, yes.
But the total annual payment's about two hundred and ten thousand, so it's a, it's a, um, roughly a quarter of the payment is due on that January first, so I, I don't know historically what the city's tax collection has traditionally been on the property tax side, but I would guess a, a large portion of it's been collected prior to January first.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And then, uh, Mrs. Sherman, do we, I know we discussed, I don't know. I don't know if you have any additional information on the prepayment process, if that is something that y- you're wanting as a department to move forward with?
And, and we did reach out to the bank to address what they shared with us in regards to that they will allow it. And Joe has some details on that, go ahead, Joe.
The bank proposed, um, prepayment without penalty in whole or in part at any point, which is good, um, for a loan. Now, the one complicating factor in terms of structuring a loan for special assessments and those small prepayments that an individual assessor, uh, assessment payer may pay, is that it depends how the bank might apply that prepayment. So if you think of like a mortgage, it's not exactly like a mortgage, but if you think about a mortgage, if you make an early principal payment, you might still be making the same annual payment, just shorten the life of it. That doesn't work as well with a special assessment, because all the other assessment payers are still gonna be left paying, and the annual amount that they pay may not be enough to cover the debt service payment. So essentially, it doesn't, um, w- we did ask the bank about that specifically, to see if they would re-amortize essentially the loan every time we, you made a small partial repayment. The initial response back did not seem like they were open to that. Um, we haven't had a formal discussion with them, we're waiting till tonight to do that. But the initial, uh, interpretation, I guess, of, of the response to it was that it may not work logistically to do that, but we're gonna reconfirm that with them pending your, uh, approval of the selection.
Okay, cause they, they offered it in whole or in part, so I'd be interested to see kind of their feedback of, what do they mean by in part?
And that's, that's exactly what we were, we were trying to get at, we specifically asked them if the city received prepaid assessments from individual homeowners, which you might have on a sale of a home or something like that. Can those be applied to prepay the loan in part, but re-amortize the loan? And the, again, their initial response was not changing the amortization, so all effectively, and we'll again confirm that with them, but effectively what that means is you're paying off of the long end of the loan, and you're just kind of shortening it. Which, depending on the type of financing, that might not be a problem. But when you talk, when you take an assessment financing, you essentially are slicing it off into all these pieces. So if you take away one of the slices, because somebody prepaid, um, you need to make sure the remaining slices can still cover the annual payments. So if you're not like, making like a pro rata reduction across the board, and you're just shortening the final uh, payment a little bit, it may cause a problem covering the annual debt service uh, in the coming years.
Yes, absolutely, and, and, and that's what, I'm, I'm just interested to see, they offered it, I would love to know what their interpretation of that offer was. So I appreciate you guys looking into it, and I know that wasn't a make or break for the residents in Emerson Park either, so that's, it was just, I liked the option.
And, and, and just to give you, um, and, and maybe this will add a little bit more to it, so as part of the request, we asked for the ability to prepay in whole or in part, without penalty, that was one of the requests. But we separately asked for, um, the ability for what's called an extraordinary prepayment, specific to prepaid assessments, so if prepaid assessments came in, you would apply them on a pro rata basis. They didn't, a- and that was optional for them to propose, they didn't propose that specifically. So the question went back to them, on your traditional prepayment, are you able to accommodate it? And it didn't appear that they were able to accommodate it exactly, but we're gonna confirm that tomorrow.
Okay, I understand that, thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody from the public who should speak on this one? Thanks for hanging in there, Dave.
Dave Woods, Emerson Park, um, just wanna thank you all. We're down to, I think, five steps out of the forty-two? Forty-two, okay, we're on thirty-six or forty-two, so, um, I guess I get to see you guys one more time on the, uh, the fourth. Thank you all, and Nick, once they get the prepayment done, we can start negotiating.
Okay. Alright, looking for a motion to approve selection of Sonovus Bank regarding the solicitation of R F P twenty twenty-five dash eight dash one eighty. Related to the bank loan for Emerson Park, got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second, second by Commissioner Blasquez, uh, Nesta, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Ordinance number three thousand.
Ordinance number three, thirty-one oh one, an ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, rewriting the comprehensive plan in its entirety, with the exception of the transportation element. Providing for legislative findings, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
For the record, Bobby Howell, uh, the citation has been pulled, uh, to a date of July second, as indicated by Mr. Williams in the agenda review, uh, at the beginning of this council meeting, to allow us additional time to look over the comprehensive plan as it relates to Senate Bill one eighty, which you all have received a copy of and an outline from me.
So, uh, do we have a date certain, or?
July second.
Okay. Any questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public who speak on this one? Not, we closed, public hearing, look for motion to, um, hold over ordinance number thirty-one oh one, first reading to July second? To July? July second, yeah. So we've got a motion by Commissioner Blasquez, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, providing for a budget amendment.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Blanch Sherman, Finance Director.
Uh-oh, you got a long way to go.
I know, I'm waiting, yeah. What I need to click? I don't know if it's.
Yeah, you got.
It's that, oh my god.
Yeah, it's, it's a big one. There you go.
Yeah, am I there?
There you go.
Okay. Um, budget amendment before you included in the budget amendment, of, of course, is the additional funding we were requesting for House number five in the amount of twenty-seven thousand nine dollars. Um, we can either move forward with that as we go out for the rebid, or I can take it off of this amendment and, um, bring it back based on what we get for the rebid. In addition to that, is the thirty-five thousand five forty-five that we're taking from general fund to CRA fund for the wayfinding signs. So the total budget amendment is in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and eight dollars.
Any questions for Blanch? Anybody from the public who should speak on this one? Not closed, public hearing, looking for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty.
So we, but, we're approving, but we're re, we're rebidding.
Yeah, still rebidding, but it, it, yeah, so we just wanna put the money in place. Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Got a motion by Commissioner Blasquez, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, alright. Commissioner Blasquez, why don't you get us started?
Um, it's a long night, so. I'm, I'm going to pass and just, uh, say that it was a good week. We attended, you know, the horse feed, their opening, the donut shop, that sold out by nine thirty. Um, we've had a lot of different activities here, we went to the lanes of, uh, scholarship, and, uh, we just had a lot of activities that we all participated in.
Commissioner Anderson.
Nope, it's a long night, I really don't have anything, but if there's anything that anyone need, please reach out to me via email or myself.
Commissioner Smith?
Uh, just wanna say that I had a, a great walking tour, uh, of the historic Apopka that Main Street put on on last Saturday, and, uh, so it was very, 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 very well received and well done.
Cool.
Alright, Commissioner Nesta?
Yeah, just, uh, we attended the, um, Emancipation Day Celebration yesterday evening, um, at the Billardine Center um, in Alonzo Williams Park, it was, um, uh, we had a decent amount of vendors there, I'm excited to start doing some re, uh, some renovations to that park as well, to make those even better. We do need to improve that parking lot as well there, um, there were so many cars there that it's in the dirt and grass, and then we just need to kind of work on marketing those projects or those events a little bit better as well, just to bring even more attendance out there to these, um, special occasions. And then, uh, final, uh, not final, but my, um, uh, consistent reminder of office hours. It's every Thursday from eleven to one here at City Hall, um, in thirty-minute increments, ready to talk about anything and everything that makes Apopka better. And I always reference ordinance thirty eighty-one, that anybody that feels that they've been, um, attacked, or, or that they just feel intimidated to come to City Hall because of that ordinance, I'm happy to meet with you anywhere and everywhere to discuss any of your needs and concerns.
Attack, what, what do you mean by attack? Uh, it, it just, it just, it's, it's insulting to our, our staff here at Apopka that you would say attack, but whatever.
Alright, go ahead and brush it off, you, you're the one attacking, though, that's not the staff that's doing it. See, right now, you're getting so upset and trying to use intimidation on me, and you do the same thing to our residents. So that's why, right there, is what they, is how this forms into an attack and intimidation, to be able to engage their elected officials properly on City Hall property, in a building that is the people's building.
So the girl out front is, I don't even know where she lives, is not even from Apopka, has been here for six months, I'm not sure how I could figure out who's sweetheart, but I don't know.
I didn't say, I specifically said it's you, I've said it multiple times, very consistently, it's you, you're the problem.
A problem with what, exactly?
Intimidation.
How, how do I intimidate?
An inconsistent application of, uh, most ordinances and rules.
How, how do I intimidate them?
There's residents that don't show up to city meetings anymore because of you, so.
So, like. Wow. Alright, Cliff?
Out of work.
Okay, alright. How about you, Bradley?
Just a quick update, uh, the Northwest Recreation and Co. Playground Project, uh, rolls on. The playground is, uh, pretty much complete now with the structures. We've moved into the roadway, uh, relief drive and parking, uh, part of the project, so if you go out to the park, you'll see a lot more construction happening to finish. to finish that uh project, so we're excited uh at that, and look forward to getting that project completed here soon.
Alright, alright. Meeting adjourned.